I'd like to call the organizational meeting of the school committee to order. At this time, I'd ask everybody to please rise and give a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very banner which stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." You remain standing for a moment of silence as for divine intervention. I remember all our men and women serving our nation in uniform around the globe, keeping the peace. Also, as we get together as a school committee, remember all those that served the school committees since we became a city back in 1888. Just take a moment of silence. Thank you. The superintendent, you can tell the role, please.
School committee person-elect, Mr. Andronico.
President.
Mr. Bragoli.
Present.
Mr. Demietis.
Present.
School committee person-elect, Mr. Guttrow.
Mrs. Hubley.
Present.
School committee person-elect, Mrs. Lebo.
Present.
And Mayor Koch.
Present.
And North Quincy High School representative, Luke Mulling.
Thank you.
Heather Coram. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. We're going to ask our two new elected and re-elected persons, if they'll come down to the front, please. In front of the microphone, we will do the swearing. Here on the far end. Middle here in the middle. Reason for that is the graphics are already ready. If you could raise your right hands, or I say aye, just state your name. Aye. You solemnly swear that I will be of true faith and allegiance to the law of Massachusetts and will support the Constitution thereof.
I will support the Constitution thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye.
You solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all those duties incumbent upon me as a member of the Quincy School Committee according to the best of my abilities and understanding agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution, the laws of this Commonwealth, and the ordinances of the City of Quincy.
And the ordinances of the City of Quincy.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye.
And you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. Congratulations. We're going to take a brief recess for individual photos, and we'll be right back to the formal session.
Everybody that knows Emily. I have two brothers that live too far away, but my son Scotty and my cousin Carol Anne, and my other son is with Jeff Hennessy right now at a track.
At this time, I would like to acknowledge some other elected officials who've joined us this evening. In the hallway is newly-elected President of Quincy City Council Brett Crowell. The Council of Lodge Neil Leane. The Council of Lodge Noel DeBarn. And in the hallway is also what, six city councilor Bill Harris. And also one who calls the President of Quincy College Peter Secaris. With that, we'll get into the organizational portion of our meeting. I'd like to open up nominations for the election of our school committee vice chair. Chair recognizes Mr. Bragoli.
Mayor Koch, as I come to the end of my term as vice chair, it is my honor and pleasure to bring Emily Lebo's name forward for nomination to the position of vice chair for the next two years. During my time on the committee, I found Mrs. Lebo to be a person of exceptional integrity, a person who was thoughtful and thorough in carrying out her duties in the committee. Emily is intelligent, well-read, and she does her homework. She has invested and dedicated a large part of her life to the education and well-being of the children of the City of Quincy. Her background in education as an administrator and current school committee member will ensure the position of vice chair will be in good hands. I am therefore formally placing the name of Emily Lebo before the school committee for nomination for the position of vice chair of the school committee, and I'm putting this in the form of motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bragoli. The chair recognizes Kathy Hubley. Give her a second. I've got my notes. I created those notes. So the chair recognizes Mr. Guttrow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to echo the sentiments of Mr. Bragoli. I've known Emily a long time, and I admire her experience, her commitment, her dedication, her honesty, and all that she's done for the children of Quincy and the teachers of Quincy, and I look forward to learning a lot under her tutelage and proudly support her nomination tonight.
Thank you, Doug. On the motion? Any other nominations? Seeing none, motion by Mr. Bragoli, second by Mr. Demietis. Close nominations. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're going to read the roll, and you have to repeat the name Emily Lebo when you vote.
Mr. Andronico.
Emily Lebo.
Mr. Bragoli.
Emily Lebo.
Mr. Demietis.
Emily Lebo.
Mr. Guttrow.
Emily Lebo.
Mrs. Hubley.
Emily Lebo.
Mrs. Lebo.
Emily Lebo.
Emily Lebo. Congratulations, Emily. Chair, it's yours. Mrs. Lebo.
Mayor Koch. I just hope you had better luck with the paper that I did. It'll be a intro by Mr. Bragoli. I'm a little bit older.
First, I want to thank my colleagues in the school committee for this honor conference, and I want all of you to know that I consider this an honor, and more importantly, I consider it a huge responsibility. I'm pleased to welcome Anthony Andronico and Doug Guttrow to the table, and I look forward to having their skills and knowledge added to our discussions, our deliberations, and our decisions. I want to thank my campaign committee here tonight for their incredible hard work and organizational abilities. I also want to thank my friends and family for their support, and especially my husband, Sue. I've had a relationship with the Quincy Public Schools for many years, as a parent, a classroom teacher, an administrator, and as a member of this body, and now all six of my grandchildren who are here with us tonight are enrolled in four of our Quincy Public Schools. We are fortunate in Quincy to live in a city that values our schools and understands that along with public safety, the schools are truly the strength of any community. Our mayor and the city council lead that support with the allocation of our budget for the daily operation of the program, schools, and staff. We have been fortunate to have experienced several years of budget increases after devastating cuts during the last recession. And the mayor really lets us focus on education by covering the cost of our facilities and loans in the city's budget and improving our infrastructure in our bus fleet through the city's capital improvement plan, and by working so closely with the superintendent on MSBA funding for new buildings and renovations of the town. Thank you, Mayor. I tell everyone that one of the things that makes our school system really great is that it is large enough to be able to have a tremendous amount of academic and extracurricular offerings for just about any interest or any need, and yet it is small enough that you can know each principal and each member of the superintendent's leadership team, and you can become familiar with each school building when you serve on this school committee. And our schools are always looking for ways to improve, and serving on the school committee allows us to truly impact the education of our students. The school committee has championed several important initiatives recently. The addition of elementary and middle school quality assessments that help teachers determine student progress and allows teachers to put into action supports or enhancements based on real data. The build-out of advanced coursework in all of our middle schools, which allows students who excel on a subject to have access to more challenging content at their neighboring schools. The support for strong transition planning for our students with disabilities that ensures that all of our school completers have solid plans for life after Quincy Public Schools. And the in-depth look at how each of our schools are doing through review of their data with teaching and learning subcommittee meetings. But we know there is always room for improvement, and we never stop trying. The school committee will be watching the rollout of the state's new accountability system and communicating with them and all stakeholders as to what the impact will be for our schools and our students. We are looking forward to opening a new elementary school in the near future in a neighborhood that has not had a school for a very long time, and we will work to determine how that will impact the rest of the schools and some space challenges that we are now facing. We will continue to advocate for substance abuse education and prevention programs, and we will be resurrecting the Student Advisory Council to promote communication between our body and the student body. Thank you, Luke, for bringing that to our attention. I want all of the parents and taxpayers of our city to know that I am here, we are here, to listen to your concerns and to provide support and advocacy for the best possible educational experience for your children. We are honored that you have put your children in our care. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lebo. Well said, and we're certainly delighted and we're certainly fortunate to sit here and have you leading the committee, so thank you so much. At this time, under the organizational portion of the meeting, it's the time to appoint the secretary of the school committee, and at this time, I would call on Mrs. Kathy Hubley.
Thank you. I would like to nominate Superintendent Rick DiChristofaro for the secretary of the school committee.
Chair recognizes Mr. Guttrow.
Second. Just want to say as a proud parent of two Quincy Public Schools, appreciate the work that you've been shepherding the school system, and we're proud to advocate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Hubley, and thank you, Mr. Guttrow. Any other nominations? Seeing none, motion by Mr. Bragoli, second by Mrs. Hubley. Close nominations. All those in favor, aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Secretary, you can tell the role, please.
Mr. Andronico.
Richard DiChristofaro.
Mr. Bragoli.
Richard DiChristofaro.
Mr. Demietis.
Doctor DiChristofaro.
Mr. Guttrow.
Doctor DiChristofaro.
Mrs. Hubley.
Superintendent Rick DiChristofaro.
Uh-oh, pressure. Mrs. Lebo.
Thank you.
Congratulations. He's not as good a shot hand as Laura, but however, congratulations to be the secretary. I know it comes with the territory being the superintendent, but we've said a number of times publicly, well, how fortunate we have been in such a low-sticking, hard-working superintendent, and that's a reflection of his team, the superintendent's leadership team, as well as we always thank our leaders, professional staff, and most of our teachers for all they do so. Thank you, Superintendent, for being the lady who are. Next item on the agenda is appointment of the city clerk to the committee. This time, I would entertain motions. Mr. Demietis.
Thank you, Mayor. Having now served on this body for two years, I know that myself, as well as my senior colleagues on this committee, are very fortunate and very thankful to have had Laura serve as our clerk to the school committee. She is not only a support staff member here at the Quincy Public Schools, but she is a listener to this body, and any questions, any concerns that we have had in the past, Laura's been the go-to person, and I just want to say how grateful I am having come to this board as a new member and not knowing anything about what this board does, with going to for any questions, and I just wanted to say how thankful I am. So I want to present your name in the form of a motion to be the next clerk to the school committee.
Chair recognizes Mr. Andronico.
I'd like to second that motion, and I just want to take a moment to echo the sentiments that Mr. Demietis said about Laura. Although we haven't worked together very long, you've already been incredibly helpful getting me up to speed on things that have been going on. Thank you.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, motion by Mr. Guttrow, second by Mr. Demietis. Close nominations. All those in favor, aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Mrs. Secretary, you can tell the role, please. Please read the name.
Mr. Andronico.
Richard DiChristofaro.
Mr. Bragoli.
Richard DiChristofaro.
Mr. Demietis.
Doctor DiChristofaro.
Mr. Guttrow.
Doctor DiChristofaro.
Mrs. Hubley.
Superintendent Rick DiChristofaro.
Uh-oh, pressure. Mrs. Lebo.
Thank you.
Congratulations. He's not as good a shot hand as Laura, but however, congratulations to be the secretary. I know it comes with the territory being the superintendent, but we've said a number of times publicly, well, how fortunate we have been in such a low-sticking, hard-working superintendent, and that's a reflection of his team, the superintendent's leadership team, as well as we always thank our leaders, professional staff, and most of our teachers for all they do so. Thank you, Superintendent, for being the lady who are. Next item on the agenda is appointment of the city clerk to the committee. This time, I would entertain motions. Mr. Demietis.
Thank you, Mayor. Having now served on this body for two years, I know that myself, as well as my senior colleagues on this committee, are very fortunate and very thankful to have had Laura serve as our clerk to the school committee. She is not only a support staff member here at the Quincy Public Schools, but she is a listener to this body, and any questions, any concerns that we have had in the past, Laura's been the go-to person, and I just want to say how grateful I am having come to this board as a new member and not knowing anything about what this board does, with going to for any questions, and I just wanted to say how thankful I am. So I want to present your name in the form of a motion to be the next clerk to the school committee.
Chair recognizes Mr. Andronico.
I'd like to second that motion, and I just want to take a moment to echo the sentiments that Mr. Demietis said about Laura. Although we haven't worked together very long, you've already been incredibly helpful getting me up to speed on things that have been going on. Thank you.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, motion by Mr. Guttrow, second by Mr. Demietis. Close nominations. All those in favor, aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Mrs. Secretary, you can tell the role, please.
Mr. Andronico.
Laura Owens.
Mr. Bragoli.
Laura Seh Owens.
Mr. Demietis.
Laura Owens.
Mr. Guttrow.
Laura Owens.
Mrs. Hubley.
Laura Owens.
Mrs. Lebo.
Laura Owens.
Mayor Koch.
Laura Owens. Congratulations, Laura. You stuck with us for the night. And I would add that I think the superintendent probably was thinking about retiring a few years back, but Laura has made his life so much easier. Laura, thank you for all you do. I do want to acknowledge former school committee member, newly-elected one, one city council, David McCarthy, who's also in the hallway. Thank you, David. While there's members of the city council here, I know they only mentioned it, but certainly on behalf of the committee, we will publicly thank you for your continued support of education. I don't think we've had a negative vote on anything education-related. It's probably been all unanimous, so we appreciate how you value education, and we appreciate your support over at 1305 Handcart Street. So thank you, council. Next sentiment on the agenda is adoption of the school committee policy. Motion, Mrs. Lebo, second by Mr. Bragoli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Adoption of subcommittee membership. Motion of Mrs. Lebo, second by Mr. Demietis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Approval of the revised 2017-2018 school committee's meeting calendar. Motion, Mr. Demietis, second by Mrs. Hubley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And then we have a draft of the 2018-2019 school year school committee meeting calendars, and this would be for referral to policy subcommittee. Motion, Mrs. Hubley, second by Mrs. Lebo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. That technically closes the organizational portion of the meeting. We have one other item on the agenda I'd like to talk a little bit about and perhaps bring it to a vote, and that is, I know it's been talked about for a couple of years. A couple of years ago, we pointed out a tract of land in West Quincy, the former St. Mary's school site that has been closed, and we've talked a little bit about the need for that going forward. As the old saying goes, buy land because they ain't making any more of it. When you're living in this urban environment, we're living in a city, you know, there isn't much land available, and the land that could be available, it becomes very costly because there's probably buildings on it. As mayor, I'll never support building a school on parkland because you'll lose that land forever. But as Mrs. Lebo touched on, there has been, in my view, for a number of years, when schools were closed after Prop. 2 and 1/2 back in 1980-81, it's kind of a hole left really in West Quincy. And we have, you know, kids that live on the other side, expressively, all the way to Montclair, some at Wallaston, perhaps some other schools as well through the other district placement. I believe out of thin air that West Quincy deserves an elementary school, for one. Number two is it will help us with our space issues, as articulated by Mrs. Lebo in her talk. And it was a school for many years, so it's not a different use for the site for the neighborhood. So for all of those reasons, we have put before the city council the bond authorization to purchase the land. City council voted to approve it, and at this time, I'd ask the committee if they have any questions. Be happy to entertain any questions. I would like, and I know it wasn't, we didn't talk about it ahead of time, but it has been talked about publicly quite a bit, that I'd love to get a vote tonight from the committee just to affirm the moves the city had made today. It doesn't bind us to anything, and the reality is the next step would require the school committee's initiation, actually, involvement, and of course, all fiduciary issues end up back at the city council. Certainly, though, the chatter is the school committee's call for the sighting, and perhaps people have different opinions, but it's been purchased for educational purposes. In light of coming up on the closing, the one council would like to see something more formal from the school committee, and that's one of the reasons we put it on the agenda tonight, so we can continue to move forward with its closing date and transfer the land to Ashdodison, Washington, to the City of Quincy. Any questions, anybody at this moment? Mr. Guttrow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, when I saw that on the agenda, I specifically asked if there was going to be a vote, and I was led to believe there wasn't going to be a vote, because especially as somebody that just got sworn in moments ago, I have limited knowledge other than what I read in the newspaper about all of it. I do know about some of the pressing issues around populations in school buildings and the need for school in West Quincy. Is there a window of time that we have a discussion in the subcommittee so that especially the new folks here can get educated in short order upon it to understand? And so the nature of the vote is to ask for, just for what? Because the school committee hasn't voted.
The quest of the vote would be really an affirmation of the vote that the city council has taken, which authorizes the mayor to vote in bond with dollars to purchase the site. It doesn't bind the city anything further than that at this point, but where it's been issued in the name of a school use going forward, one council would prefer that the school committee be on record with it. I didn't think it would be, and we didn't have that discussion. I understand superintendent you had that discussion. I apologize for any miscue in that, but that's basically the reason. The reality is it was a school site, so neighborhood used to a school. It was available for sale, and that doesn't happen too often when things line up properly. What happened fortunately for us was Central Middle School. The old St. Anne's site was a very similar situation. So that's really the purpose. There's no great detail. It's been in the paper at the purchase price of $2.7 million, I believe, is what the city council authorized me to borrow, and then from there, really the beginning stages will happen. Because, you know, I want to remind people that this body has voted for the last couple of years to support the application of the school building authority for a new Squonan Elementary School, or at very least, the study of the Squonan Elementary School, and that won't change. We'll be coming before this body once again within probably the next four to six weeks for another vote, and the council will have to take a vote again affirming the school committee's vote moving forward on the Squonan Elementary, because it's been determined by all the experts that that is the weakest planned building in the system now at the Squonan. We've made great progress on all of our buildings in so many ways, notwithstanding the strong damage from last week. And so I don't want to put anyone in a bad position, but I think it's pretty straightforward, and once we begin the official process, the committee would be obviously very involved in discussions going forward on what the building would be used for. And quite frankly, it says education. My thought is elementary. If the committee disagrees, it's a decision of the committee. So it just begins the process. I know Mrs. Lebo had her hand up.
Yeah, I'm comfortable affirming the vote that's been taken on the other side of the city. I really am comfortable affirming it. I don't think that we're getting ourselves too far down any road about what specifically is going to happen there, but I think it would be in both of us to at least support where the city is going with this, and I would be comfortable taking a vote to affirm the mayor's intention and the city council's vote to acquire the site, the St. Mary's Elementary School for spirit purposes.
Mr. Bragoli.
Thank you, Mayor Koch. As a former resident of West Quincy, growing up there, having attended Greeley-Bryant School and watching the closing of Willard and Greeley-Bryant, I know the impacts it had on the West Quincy community. And when I made the suggestion a couple of years ago, Mayor Koch took up the torch to look into purchasing St. Mary's, I think it would be a win-win for our school system and our city. It would alleviate some overcrowding issues, as Mrs. Lebo spoke so eloquently about in her presentation. So I just think it's a just no-brainer that we move forward with this and get it moving.
We have a discussion. Chair recognizes Mr. Guttrow.
It just, you know, I feel like it puts me in an odd spot. Undoubtedly, I've come out in support of it. I suspect, I know that there was not a vote of the school committee last year about the citing in terms of location before it went for the bonding authority. Is that factually accurate?
Well, we had discussions.
Okay, but there wasn't a vote of the school committee. And so now this, and I don't have any paper on this, so the specific vote that we're casting tonight is to say that we affirm that this will be the future site for educational purposes in the City of Quincy for the purpose of the bond that was voted on by the council. Is that the affirmation that we're?
That's correct.
And again, I'm new to it. I will vote favorably, but from a process standpoint, it would be terrific to be brought up to speed, to be educated on the analysis of sites, and I agree with you about Mark Twain's buy land or make it any more of it. You know, just to be brought, to educate as to the analysis of other properties in the area and why this would go. It seems like this is serendipitous, and that we need to do it, and that there have been long-standing negotiations, but to physically have no paperwork or background briefing before it. But I understand the compelling needs of the schools and the capacity issues and the needs of West Quincy, and I'll cast that vote. But I hope subsequent to that, the superintendent can provide all the information to be helpful. And I don't want to hinder or slow or do anything with respect to the process. I just want to be educated on it so that I can cast a vote with some knowledge.
I appreciate that, council. I do want to reiterate that this for purpose of the public, that this has been talked about from time to time before this body. There were no official votes taken, and it has been talked about publicly in the notification of it, and of course, obviously, the city council vote in this very public, formal process there. I understand where you're coming from, and I appreciate your working with us on tonight, and I can assure you, this just begins a very lengthy, detailed process that you probably will thoroughly enjoy in the next two days. So with that, Mrs. Lebo?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we affirm the mayor's intention and the city council's vote to acquire that site, taking Mary's site.
Okay, we've had a motion made. Second, Mrs. Secretary, you can tell the role.
Mr. Andronico.
Aye.
Mr. Bragoli.
Yes.
Mr. Demietis.
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
And Mayor Koch.
Yes. Thank you. I also say State Representative Bruce is a staff aide, so say hello. Representative, thank you. I'd just add that Bruce has been a strong advocate for Local A and Chapter 70 money, which is money that goes directly to our schools along with our delegation, so thank you, Representative, for stopping by tonight.
Welcome, Representative for Quincy High School. Thanks, Ted.
Seeing no other business, motion made to adjourn. Mrs. Lebo, over. Favor, aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, and congratulations to the families and friends of our newly-elected